We'll call it to order, five after. We do have a quorum. I know Stephen's coming. Does anybody need an agenda? I have an agenda. I haven't written all over it. Well, I've written all over it, but... I don't have extras. I can make-
You don't have extra? Oh, that's fine. I'd look at it on-
We can make coffees.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Anybody needs one? I hesitate to make them only because I expect Stephen is going to come with several. So if you can wait just a second. I don't want to waste coffees. Because I'm pretty sure they'll come. Members of the public, we don't have any at this time. Maybe they will come. They do, we'll join them then. Additions or corrections to the agenda? I do have one thing, and I said I was going to reply to Lyndle, but I didn't, and I meant to.
That's okay.
We're going to add just a quick report-
About two minutes.
For Lyndle, for the Career Center. As we- you probably all remember that Lyndle is now our rep to the Career Center Regional Advisory Board. And she's been to meetings, and she's going to give us a little report, which is great. Thank you so much. So we'll add that. Do you care where?
Nope, nope. End, middle, wherever you want.
Why don't we do it right after administrative reports, since Stephen's not here yet? And I'm pretty sure he'd love to hear your report as well. Okay, correspondence.
I also have something to add to the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please do.
If we could briefly go into executive session at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Where you feel appropriate.
Is there a topic? Is there a reason?
Yes.
Just staff personnel?
Legal.
Legal?
Personnel.
Okay, personnel. So we'll do one- we'll do that at the end, if you don't mind. No, this is a reason to do it earlier. Okay. Alright, so we'll do that at the end. And correspondence.
Ross?
Yes?
Okay, well, there's a magazine for someone to take home on school planning and management. Anybody interested?
Yeah.
Magazine? And then, ooh, Towns and Select-
Not a great venture.
So, we have a letter here, I haven't even opened it yet, from the Towns and Select Board. It's a letter that's following up on the Towns and Select Board's request for Leland and Gray to open the vehicle right-of-way access behind Dutton Gym to the rear of the Towns and Town Hall. David Deesendorf presented you with a reminder of that commitment earlier this summer. Please advise the Select Board as soon as possible with your plans on this so that our construction activities can be coordinated. Kit Martin, on behalf, he's chair of the Towns and Select Board. So, I'll wait for Stephen to come. I know Stephen, unless you would like to report on it, I don't-
No, I think we should wait for Stephen.
Okay. Because I do know Stephen has been communicating with the Towns and Select Board, and I really don't know much about it. So, we'll add that to the minutes. We got that. So, we've added that to the minutes, and then we'll speak about it in just a few minutes when Stephen has a chance to settle in. I'll let you see this, and then we'll talk about it there. Okay. So administrative reports, that's you, Durin, first.
Pay orders here.
Did you do yours?
Yeah.
Great. Then, one person's down them, so if somebody would step up and review pay orders.
Try that.
Durin, she's first.
Ah, a long question. Okay, I have done it, like, once or twice.
Got somebody who's willing.
I can't do it. I don't have glasses. Sorry.
All right, go ahead, Durin.
Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening, Durin.
Sorry.
It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you all. So, the first item is the kneecap science scores came in. There was time where it was under quarantine to make sure that the students who were tested were actually represented on the list and vice versa. And so I did have some earlier information about this, and then it were made public. And I tried to get this information to you as soon as I could. And I was proud to tell the current ninth graders and 12th graders that they had earned the second highest kneecap scores in the last five years. But I didn't tell them that it was a dip of quite a bit from previous year, because I wanted to make them feel good, because it shows that while we've made progress, we did have a real upswing last year. And it makes it feel a little bit about a numbers game because of cohorts. Particular students in a grade level who- And also, it depends on the kind of- what was on the exams themselves. So when we looked at, and I analyzed the results with my leadership team, areas where we- which were strengths last year, which was virtually everything, that is compared in comparison to the rest of the state, turned up as weaknesses this year. And they're different. And so sometimes the kneecap exam emphasizes more biology. If they emphasize more earth science, our students are going to perform better on that, because that's what they had their whole junior year at this point, for the last two years. So, I can't say that I feel it's a... No, I shouldn't say, we're not there yet, but we're not where we were. Any questions, Ross?
I actually was trying to figure out if this particular class did better than the last time they took the kneecaps in science. So I couldn't tell, of course, for the eighth grade. But for the 11th grade, if I'm not wrong, they took them in 2010?
They would have taken them in three years earlier, so yes. But those- that's not their scores.
Well, but they did- they- 20%-
Oh, right, down.
-achieved proficiency, and this time 25% achieved proficiency.
No, it would mean that this class of, who are now a class of 2014, that when they were in eighth grade, they 11% passed the exam. And then, this past spring, 25%. Which is really fucking-
That's incredibly good.
Yes, you're right. I didn't really notice it like that before.
So it's now here. This is when the eighth-
Yeah, that's the eighth grade.
Okay, so that- I was trying to figure out, because it's really the individuals, it's the class as a whole, and how they're improving as time goes on, right? Isn't that a-
Yeah. Wow, and that also, I hadn't really thought of it, because I'm so used to a real dissent after they take it- they take any exam in eighth grade, whether it's science or reading, and that happens across the state. When we look at this as a whole, well, boy, the class of 2012 is going to be off the charts by the time they take the contest in 2015. But if we look at a very- our very strong class that 44% passed last spring, when they were in eighth grade, only 18% of them passed. Not last spring, but two springs ago.
So that would be the same group of kids, right?
Right.
With a few variances.
Yeah, just a- right, right. But, good point.
And before eighth grade, they're tested in fourth grade. So there's a long gap before eighth grade. So I think that makes that eighth grade test really difficult, because it's four years' worth of science education in one test.
Right. Any other questions, observations about the scores?
No, but I will say I appreciate your summary of this. It's really very helpful to me. As I sit and read this, it doesn't surprise me. I've gotten used to you reporting things out for us in a way that makes it very usable for us, and something we can go from year to year, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to compliment on that. Thank you for helping on that.
You're welcome. I mean, we consistently have students who are eligible for free and reduced meals perform at a greater percentage than at the state level. And this year, I really paid close attention to these bubble kids, and I looked at in previous years, how- what percentage earned a two or a one, and the percentage of students who earned a one on the exam is down a lot. So it's somewhere in the notes in here about... Yeah. So, I think that is very, very good. So, I see you've got a nice typo on here. Just trying to get better.
Congratulations.
The science teachers receive the results of how students performed on specific test questions. There's about 15 release items, so they're able to analyze. They have a copy of those 15 questions, and then how our students did on those questions, so they can see where the gaps are. And it's not the whole exam, but it is, you know, a quarter, but something like that.
So, Durin, so at some point, the next generation's science standards are going to come to bear. So, how are you going- how is that working in? How are you- how- where are we with that at this point?
Well, I think we're so far ahead that I got nervous, and I called the Department of Ed. Yes, because our- for the last two years-
Their science?
-our teachers have been working with a consultant, Elizabeth Mira, on aligning our curriculum with the next generation's state science standards. And so I called the Department of Ed and said, "Since the science kneecap test is going to be given for the next three years, what about these new standards? And if kneecap is assessing Vermont framework, where- what do we do?" And he said that if our students are doing the NGSS curriculum, they'll be fine on the kneecap test, because, believe it or not, the NGSS standards, there's more, and they're more complex. So they would be better prepared. So, the Science Department has already met a half-day this year. They met about three full days last year specifically to do that work on realigning the-
So if the students are doing well in the kneecaps, they're going to- then the idea is that they will be doing well on the-
That's what the state told me. Right. That's why I said we're a little bit ahead. And, I don't know, Stephen, have you got any more word about the transition process? Leland and Gray will be hosting a meeting in the next month or so for the region that the state has requested is their high school, that's, you know, going to host this event. And so we are hosting an event for administrators, curriculum directors, and science teacher leaders. So they'll be coming to us, and they'll be rolling it out and explaining the transition process.
You're referring to the NGSS, the science stuff? Well, I did hear John Fisher, the Deputy Secretary, speak to the new generation science standards. Vermont is the sixth state, or one of six states, to have adopted them. So, he doesn't advise there's a critical mass to expect much on a national perspective or in a, you know, collegial state. In other words, he's saying that the implementation that you anticipate or may wish may lack the resources to happen as quickly as we once thought. Anyway, that's the- that was a little bit of a, you know, wet blanket to the superintendent's meeting last week, or the week before. But we certainly believe very strongly, the State Board does believe that the new standards in science are very appropriate and, you know, much needed. So, we'll continue to proceed ahead. It's just that this meeting may be an indication of the extent to which we'll have to be leaning on each other within the state. And when I say leaning, again, with each other, that is collaborating with other teaching and administrative professionals in our own schools in Vermont. Because the state is not likely to have the resources, nor the federal government, from all we can tell, to support any significant implementation of new standards.
What Durin just said, though, is that if they're doing well in the kneecaps, then therefore the curriculum is fairly rigorous.
Yeah, and I would agree. We're not wasting our time doing what we're doing. I mean, it's not going to be counterproductive. But, yeah, anyway.
And we won't need to change our course sequence. So the junior earth science and seventh-grade life science.
Yeah.
It's within that, that they're moving things around, and adding considerably. And then there's some other areas where they have to- that are de-emphasized.
I can't underscore the importance enough of having positive results. When your instructional leader is trying to change the sequence of instruction, the content of the lessons, and to be aligned with the new standards, it's absolutely essential that the staff, the teachers, see some results from their change. That's what's going to drive the continued reform. You know, if we're continuing to initiate new programs and new opportunities for professional learning, and the students' indicators are still unacceptable, less than desirable, then we can't drive the reform that we need in education. So I'm very pleased to see these results, and commend Durin and her staff publicly, both privately. But it's- you certainly want to make sure that in your discussion with public, with parents, concerned parents and so forth, that we point out what progress has been made. We've got to keep that trend, that wheel going in that direction. And you can only do so by concentrating on the progress that has been made, and not keep comparing to this ideal state of 100% of our kids making, you know, reaching heaven, or whatever it is.
Okay, so, there are parts of the report. So I provided some information about the Common Core state standards as root, because it's so much driving the work that we're doing. And I wanted to demonstrate the level of complexity, because I don't think we've actually grappled with any of the standards specifically. Currently, I'm meeting with all of the faculty who I supervise, and the others, mostly in the Unified Arts Department, who are supervised by Melanie Zelinski. We have a flip chart book of the Common Core, and it's very easy to find all of the standards by grade level and by cluster. So there's writing standards specific to social studies and history, other writing standards specific to science and technical subjects. And she and I will literally meet with teachers and talk about how they're teaching writing, reading, and vocabulary directly from the standards, of teaching those standards. And so you see so many examples here. So it's really driving our work in a significant way. Any questions about that?
More comments? Thanks for including us, Durin. It's important. We think-
And I-
-are informed about where we are with Common Core.
I mean, we did spend two days in the spring on this with a consultant, and who did professional development in June. And then, for September 27th in service, Sarah Berger, our new literacy coach, two-thirds of the day was devoted to this work with her. So, she did a great job. Very happy with our new coach. So, another development as of late is reconsidering our food service facilities. If there's any possibility for the school board to consider renovating what we have because of the expansion that- I mean, when I arrived at the school, I'll say I was surprised that this building was not originally built with a kitchen, and what was created over time, particularly dependent on the food service providers, the Abbey Group, to bring equipment as well, to be able to feed as many students as we do. And plus that then expanded, going from 38 to 50. The state statistic is that 50% of our students are eligible for free and reduced meals. And so, for these and the other reasons I've listed, I'm asking you to consider this possibility to be a part of our budget proposal for next year. And- but I would need direction from the board. It's funny, because at our last meeting, you asked me about, "Could we have some updated information about our building, how's it doing?" And this possibility comes in part from that request. And me meeting with our head of buildings and maintenance, Ed McGrath, about the state of our building, and while I didn't have a report for you, he talked with me at length about the concerns we have about what we currently use. And he brought this to my attention when I arrived, and at least another time, and here we are again, and we met with Frank and talked about this extensively. So I don't know if this can be a topic of discussion today, but I'd really look for a direction from the board if this is something that you would consider doing. I know it's a tough time.
What do you have in mind, specifically? I mean, clearly, I know where the kitchen is, but that's about the extent of it. So, are you thinking of making the space larger? Are you thinking of an additional building next to it? Are you thinking of moving the kitchen elsewhere in the building?
So it would not include building on, but redesigning the space of where the cafeteria is, the activity room, and the family consumer science room, which is a very, very large room, considerably larger than the cafeteria now. And it is outfitted with a lot of equipment, and not to say that that would be then the professional kitchen equipment, but electricity and ventilation, things like that. So, Ed would draw up a design, because he's been in there so extensively and thought about it a long time, something that would use that area.
That would so be a combined sort of a thing, to serve two purposes?
No, we would have a separate classroom. We'd keep a separate classroom for family consumer science. But it would likely not be in the space that it's in, but instead where the cafeteria is now.
But I think you're pointing out there would be enough electrical outlets. There's some pieces of it could be used commonly.
Right. It's not like we would build a new kitchen in the gym or something, where it'd be completely new, or something, you know, added on to it that would require something really different.
And I could throw something very facetious in there. Having cooked for the faculty breakfast, I think you need a new place.
Hey, you've got some firsthand experience there, huh?
Several of us have worked in that kitchen.
Yeah, Joe was across the way with the bacon. Anyway, that's just a frivolous comment.
First person.
It was not a productive-
It seems like David Deesendorf came in here several years ago talking about using the high school as a place, as a shelter. I don't even remember the whole conversation. And I wonder- and I haven't heard anything about that since. And I'm wondering if he's got any sources of funds for something that would- could tag into this.
Durin, do you have any feedback on that, or do you, Stephen, I-
I haven't heard anything recently about that. The Red Cross did review the building for the purposes of emergency shelter. And the investment in terms of the emergency, the power-
Generator.
-generator and resources to keep this building going is a big deal. So they chose not to, you know, the emergency services chose not to make that investment at this time, or at the time they did this a few years ago. But there are some advantages to the building. Clearly, we have an elevator. We have a secure space, you know, it heats pretty well. But the emergency power- we only have emergency power invested ourselves to keep our servers going, to keep the file servers and the computer core communication among all the schools in Leland and Gray going. That's what you see the little generator out there for.
So it doesn't seem likely that there's any option for them for doing what this is suggesting, so. Well, we'll keep that a reminder, anyway.
If there's a will, it certainly is a possibility. Many of the other schools, Jamaica, for example, is an emergency designated place, and Jamaica Village School.
Yeah, smaller buildings are even easier.
They're a little easier to manage, and, you know. So.
I would think that, you know, anybody who we talk to, or if we decide to do this or whatever, is going to really want some numbers as to how many more we serve than 1970, when it was built, and what the future looks like as far as, and the idea that, you know, we're feeding, we're doing two meals a day now, instead of one, et cetera. You know, I think that would be interesting information that would add to the evidence.
I think those members of the board who attended school here probably remember there wasn't any meals served, just a long time.
Oh.
This place was not designed to serve any meals.
The food service was intended to be built, and it was scratched from the original plan in 1969, scratched again in 1996, when we did all of these renovations, including the science room, and then again in 2005, and then again in 1970.
This area, we have it kind of jury-rigged together?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the current place is designed-
It used to be a drum space, actually.
Oh, I did that.
It was a stage. It was a backstage.
Yeah.
It was a stage.
There is no design for a cafeteria in Leland and Gray. And I've spent many attempts to address the problem, but funding has been-
My high school had the most beautiful kitchen. It had two separate-
Yeah, it's been an ongoing discussion here at Leland and Gray for as long as I've been around, which is, I was the first seventh-grade class that entered Leland and Gray, in fact, so were UTON.
Did you say 69?
And with 70, we opened. Yeah.
As old as I am.
Yeah, and it's, that's dating us all back, or whatever.
I had 69, so.
But we have had that conversation, and it's been part of every- like Frank just said, it's been part of every single bond that we've put forward to the public, and none of them have passed with that in it, with kitchen space in it. And I think it's unfortunate, because if we'd done something a long time ago, it would be a lot easier to deal with today. But, you know, as we move forward, we, you know, it keeps coming back up. And it keeps coming back up because there's a need. And we knew that the need was always going to be there until we addressed it, and we have been putting it off. So I'm not surprised you're bringing this to us now. My thought on it is that, you know, if we're not talking bond, I don't know if we're talking bond, if we're talking budget or we're talking bond, it's just about dollars. And I don't- I want to only speak for myself here. I support whatever we can do to feed our kids in the best way we possibly can. And, you know, money is always the problem. And so if we can find a way to do it, I would hope we move forward with something, you know, again. You know? And I don't know what it's going to cost, and this doesn't really tell us much about. But I would encourage you to continue to get more numbers myself. But that's, you know, it's a board decision to make.
Has it never been tried just by itself, or has it always been linked to a larger renovation plan?
It was always linked, I think, yeah.
So it's a smaller piece, and it's an easy sell?
Never felt like that, though. Why?
Picture the kitchen and put it online or something, or you have an easy sell. It's scary to think that that space is what serves that many students.
I have to tell you, I bet you the administrators sitting to my right would all agree that the needs are a lot greater today, you know, for our kids.
I bet that's close to the same space that Jamaica has.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you say?
Yeah, it's pretty similar.
And we're a school of, like, 68, 70 kids.
Yeah, it's definitely inadequate space. And honestly, the reason why it's functioning as well as it is is because when we got Abbey Group in here, they brought in equipment. And that was how we were able to expand our service of food to our kids, even then. And Abbey Group has been great, and I appreciate the work that you've done, Frank, on that. But it's still not enough, obviously, with Durin's coming to us again, so.
Obviously, a nice kitchen for a small school. You go to Dover.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
They got a first-class kitchen there. They have, and they built it, you know, when they built that big building for many of our kids and what they have now.
But we don't all have it. Newthing never had it either.
No, they have a pretty-
It's very limited.
Yeah, improvised space.
Yeah.
So, Durin, do you think it's reasonable for you to discuss this further with Ed and whoever else is going to be able to make some concrete suggestions on how to go about this? And then put together some numbers and see if we can work that into the budget?
I was hoping you'd ask that.
You want some guidance? I mean, I'm not going to give you any guidance in terms of where to put the kitchen, I mean, but- but, I mean, right, nobody here, but working with your staff and Ed, I mean, if you can do that, that'd be good.
Thank you.
With so many kids depending on us, for two meals a day.
Yeah. Any other requests about this? It sounds like everybody's in general support of you continuing forward with this.
Okay, I really hesitated to putting out any numbers or anything other than I'm seeing the need, saw it when I arrived three years ago, seeing the need expand, and not meeting the need to the, what should I say? I mean, no one's going hungry, but I think we can do much better, not just for food quality, but also being able to support local growers, local food producers, if we have the storage capacity, as well as the monitoring of the cafeteria, the flow of the line so students can get through much faster. And for all I know, if we have a more efficient kitchen, it could cut costs, too. So I don't know if you all have to vote on this, or just say, okay, go ahead?
No, because, you know, until we have number in the budget, we're not going to know whether we're going to be able to support it anyway. It's all going to be a matter of dollars, obviously, but it's nice to hear that everybody's in general support.
Percent support.
You know, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments about kitchens, please?
I wonder if you can do something creative, let's say, you know, before plays, you've got a new kitchen, now you can treat it like a restaurant, you know, and do dining there and just different little, open it up to the community.
The last school I worked in had a cafe.
That's.
They had a kitchen, a cafeteria, and then a cafe.
Yeah.
We actually had that, we had quite an in-depth conversation about that over several of our bond votes, how we would open up the kitchen to the community and feeding, especially because of the link of the hospital, but in the meantime, the hospitals have been at their facility as well, so.
Rattleberry has that, they have a cafe there, it's beautiful.
Yes, yes.
Their new kitchen.
Wow. So this is the last piece was, I was speaking with Stephen about the progress of school evaluation, and I just want, I will have more information to share next month, but I will be going to Mill River High School and meeting with two other principals to talk about our scope, all of what it will entail to conduct an evaluation at all three of our schools next year. So, and I also got correspondence from a couple of principals in the state asking, so what'd you guys do about me ask? And so I sent them our white paper, and they were very grateful for the information.
That's good, that's good. It's nice to be a resource as well. Thanks for sharing that.
So they might end up including, be included in the group at some point, three months if we're working within the state to do our evaluation work, if you have more.
They were from pretty far away.
Oh, then they have a lot there, or part of it.
Far from us, yeah. So I wouldn't say no, but I think that the two other school principals and I need to hammer out a lot of things to come. I, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so if there's no other comments or questions for Dorin?
Without further ado, I'd like Joe Winrich to stand with me here. Okay, I have a letter to read. Stephen, during our regional meetings this year, we acknowledged our appreciation for board members with five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-plus years of service on their school board. Joe Winrich on the Leland and Gray School Board has five years of service on his board. He was unable to make it to the regional meeting. I have enclosed a certificate of appreciation for him. Would you please present it to him at a school board meeting, or however you see fit? Thank you, Carrie Lamb from the Vermont School Boards Association. Congratulations to you, Ms. Winrich. Thank you very much, Stephen.
I'll get it to you at some point.
So I did get out a, I did get out a superintendent's report. Anybody wants a printed copy, if you want to spare your printer at home or whatever, I have one here if you want.
Yeah, sure.
So I welcome any questions regarding the report.
I'll take one.
Love the instrumental music thing.
Yeah, the news on instrumental music is certainly encouraging for the future. And just so the people on the table or whatever know what that's referring to, there were fifty, Michael McKinney, our elementary instrumental music teacher at the elementary level, reported fifty-three new elementary students signing up this year to study an instrument, and fifty-one continuing from last year, so that would make a pretty healthy group for our small schools, most of whom are sending kids our way to Leland and Gray.
That's great.
Yeah.
I'll know if I'm not going to go from there.
Right. I think otherwise, I did on this report, the previous one I sent was a little bit vague about the upcoming executive committee meeting for the WCSU board. That's the beginning of our first deliberations on the budget at the WCSU level, superintendent's budget regarding compensation for the non-union staff of, employed by the high office and the WCSU. So that's coming up now on the 30th. We had to postpone it from the 23rd. You're all cordially invited to attend a special presentation lecture speech by Diane Ravitch, who was once a very strong proponent of testing and accountability, as I understand it, Linda Bush.
She was HW.
And she has, you know, from some people's point of view, some person's point of view, points of view, seen the light, so she's out.
From her point of view, she's on 360.
Yeah, she's on 360, but anyway, she's seen her own light, but she's spreading the light, so she is out on the speaking engagement education conference tour. And is a very convincing speaker, has written on the topic, a very well-received book. And what's her name?
It's an interesting, it's a thing of error.
It's a reign of error.
That's it, that's it.
Reign of error.
The reign of error. It was a very clever title.
So you might Google her name and find out, but anyway, the deal is that at Dartmouth, she is speaking, and it's sponsored by the Vermont Superintendent's Association and the Vermont School Board Association.
As well as Dartmouth.
As well as Dartmouth, and so you can sign up. I think Frank was thinking of going, I don't know if he'd still make it, but I know that Dorin was inquiring about it, and Emily and I will be there. Emily has to go early because she gets to eat dinner with the dignitaries.
I do, I get to eat dinner with Diane all the time at the site.
So she's.
Because I made the first contact with her in San Diego.
You'll get an autographed copy or something.
I actually have a photo with her already. That's how I managed to get to talk to her. You had to get in a line to get a photo. She's quite well-known. You had to go behind stage, just had to know the right people. It was very odd.
So anyway, that's an opportunity for you, so do let me know if you want some help signing up for that, but.
In a nutshell, it's all about privatization, essentially, about privatization of the school systems and the destruction of the public school system in this country.
That's what she perceives.
Very, I think it's, if it's costs at all, it's like 25 bucks.
Yeah.
I signed up.
And you get a book.
Oh, good.
And the school board will pay, so.
So do call if you want to try a carpool or something.
Everybody who goes gets one of her signed, so her new book. Really should, if you can.
So any other, I'm trying to see if there's any like that. I do want to recognize our new employee, Claire Johns, not related to me, there's an S at the end of her name.
I think you did that last week.
And maybe I said it, but it's in the report now. And then we also have these wonderful new speech language pathologists working in the S U. Very happy to welcome.
That's great.
And the number of special ed students continues to increase.
It does, yes. That is the news. In fact, we had anticipated, we're already putting together what's called the Serv, is that what you call it? Serv, anyway, there's a special ed.
Or the service plan.
Service plan, thank you. For the number of students we project next fall, and the news is pretty troubling. We have a lot of serious cases early, at this early essential, at triple E, which interestingly are not reimbursable in terms of expense, but is legally applied to provide for their needs. It's preschool, pre-K, and we, I think we're looking at maybe 160 or something like that. It's not finished, but we were at, what, 142 or something, we were in the 40s, something like that.
This is God, not numbers of kids, right?
Number of kids.
160 kids? S U Y.
S U Y, 160 kids. But I'm just saying that we only had 140-something last year. We thought we would go down because of, well, no leaving.
Close to almost 20.
Yeah, yeah, there's something, something. I mean, I don't want to start in rumors here, I'm just saying that we have no indication that the, if you look at the two lines on a chart, the special education continues to gradually increase needs of our students, while the general enrollment of our student population decreases. So obviously, the projected budget analysis or investments by the public and by the individual school district, state and federal government, is a larger percentage, at least in Vermont, of this S U, of the budget going to special education, a larger percentage of the total outlay. I want to remind you that.
With the corresponding funding.
The triple E, the early central education, I think Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, but we only get about $56,000 in the whole S U for that, in terms of triple E, in terms of money from support, but the legal mandate to provide services for those students is absolutely clear, and absolutely the most important thing to do for these kids. So I think that, you know, we'll be recognizing some increased pressures on our budget, taken as a whole throughout the S U, as well as individually, depending on the circumstances of the schools, school districts. So I wish the news were better, but if you really want to get depressed, you can look at what the Congress is doing for us recently and.
Or not.
Yeah, well, it's one-way putting it, and I like to put it positively, of course. But the, and then the effects of the sequestration, already the 10% that's been cut, is affecting our ability to provide professional learning for our staff, our teachers. You know, we had a pretty ambitious plan of continuing to pursue the mathematics and the balanced literacy, quantum penalty at the elementary and the sentence here at Leland and Gray, that we are going to try to continue to find the resources to do, but, for example, recently, I certainly informed the principals that when we send our teachers off to these workshops, these sponsored workshops on these two very important critical instructional areas, or send them to the GLAMS meeting, that is the grade-level meetings that get people to meet across and among the elementary schools particularly, as well as five through eight that we're promoting. These costs will be additional substitute teachers, it'll be borne by the local school district, because we don't have the federal funding resources to support it. So that's, and we have to keep that in mind when we look forward, so we have to continue to try to live within our limited means, but get the most we can out of it. And that's where there are going to be some tough choices. So I think the next meeting will be chocolate cake time, but, you know, we won't do that tonight. I've heard this before.
Yes, we have.
We'll get it.
As long as the cake's along with you.
I do have a couple, I do have a couple of other items. I brought a copy of the open meeting law, particularly, Emily needs to be reminded, but for the chairs of all the boards to have handy, and other board members if you like. This is really from the V S B A, the Vermont School Boards Association website, so there isn't any place you couldn't go online if you wanted to look at it yourself, but I find quite often when you come to meetings, it's handy to have it, to refer to. Sometimes people ask you questions about meetings and warnings, and if you look on the back, yes, Joe here is pointing out something about minutes already, you can see.
Well, they were available if anybody requested.
If anybody asked, yeah. And there is some fine print on the back, which talks about what board members can do electronically, and what school board members should not do.
And what they can't do electronically.
Also regarding public records, and what reasons that there may be to justify an executive session. So, you know, it's just a reiteration of some of the things I keep reminding boards about, but I commend it to your.
Thank you.
Nightstand reading. And then I have an interesting issue that has come up regarding tuition. I received a request for public information from an organization in Scottsdale, Arizona, a place outside of Scottsdale, Arizona, and it is from the Alliance Defending Freedom for Faith and Justice group. Received some nice lengthy letters in legalese from their lawyer that required that the four districts who have choice in terms of where they're sending schools and kids for tuition, Wardsboro, Stratton, Dover, and Marlborough, there's a request for three years, first of all, of policy procedures regarding approval of tuition payments, and three years of email correspondence regarding any communication on the issue. Well, I haven't actually complied with this yet, but I will call to the public's attention that although this organization offers to pay for all my expenses, you can imagine that this would be quite a job, quite a task to come up with this information. So I have sent a summary of my investigation pursuit of the issue. We have only had one case of denial of tuition based on the school being religiously affiliated, and so that's the case that called me about, of course. But we haven't had any others, so nothing to be particularly concerned about, except that you can see that the public information requirements, what do they call that law? Anyway, Freedom of Information Act, that's it, can be used by organizations to certainly burden the administration of any school system.
So they're concerned because tuition may have been paid to a religious school?
No, their concern is that it wasn't.
Was it?
The other way.
Yeah, this is the Alliance for Freedom and Justice and Faith and.
But it is a good reminder that we are as board members.
It kind of links subtly with my.
It does, with the open meeting law, and honestly, as board members, we operate only at an open board meeting, and our minutes are available to anybody who wants, and we don't have any electronic communications, we don't have to.
Yeah.
You know, and it really makes it a lot simpler for us and for the administration.
And this outfit from Arizona is calling you on this?
Oh, yeah.
How many other letters have they sent?
They faxed it and sent me, they both faxed it and sent me a hard copy.
Do you think that the family who was involved contacted them?
Oh, yeah. That's the way you do it. If you want the public school to pay for your private tuition, that's the way to do it. And you can bet they've had success with other districts.
Oh, I'm sure.
Other states, too.
I don't intend to be one of those, but.
Good for you.
It takes quite a bit of gumption, this, you know, decline to, what do you call it? Decline to comply, at least willingly. So I haven't consulted with lawyers yet, that would be the next step, but I sent a letter, which I think will be sufficient, mostly.
Good, well, thanks for being on topic.
Interestingly, in the case that they're concerned about, the family concerned has not pursued the process that they have in terms of appeal, at least, yeah.
At our level, yeah.
You're not, it's not a bottomless perspective, because you don't pay tuition, at least unless it's special ed or, you know, career center, which is a lot. Other questions? Yeah?
A little unrelated, but I know that in the past, we've talked about possible tuition students coming. students coming here from overseas. There was talk of some Chinese students coming, but nothing happened. Just wondering if I, did I miss something?
I'm not sure.
Things did happen.
Yes.
No, I mean, there was in the summer programs, but like students who came here, who paid tuition, who stayed here for the whole week.
Right, so last year we had two. I mean, should I answer your question? So last year we had two tuition paying students. They're now attending Drexel University. So they came here as seniors, college placement process with Sarah Grasso, and so it's very successful. They're still pretty tight with their families, I think, their Leeland and Gray families.
You were hosting one of them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was saying Kevin didn't touch.
Okay.
He owns Care Packages.
Like every college.
Yeah.
Still attached. And we did have a student who was accepted to come this year, and the US government would not approve her visa.
The US government?
Yes, yes. So she had applied three times at the embassy in her city, and every time it was denied. So next, this coming Friday, Tom Connor and Tang Chen are going to China for about eight days for student recruitment. So they'll be visiting our sister schools in Hangzhou and Xizan province. And they will also have another trip in the spring with Journey East and Jesse Rehm Schneider, social studies teacher, will be visiting our school that we have the two-plus-one agreement with, Tangshan Foreign Language School, which is just outside of Beijing. And so we're working on it. But we were very disappointed that the student who had applied and was accepted, and we were looking forward to having host family set up everything, and we couldn't...
Is, it must be very competitive over there for American schools seeking foreign students replacement?
That there are public and private schools seeking Chinese students? Yes. And Leeland and Gray being in a rural area is not as attractive to, in comparison to Boston or New York. And in China, there's pretty stark differences between urban and rural life. And I don't think they understand the quality of rural life we achieve. So, except for students who come in the summer. And most part, they're a lot younger than seniors. Some of them are as young as thirteen. And I think they appreciate, I mean, they know. They, a lot of you have experienced that. And that, yes, yeah. So it takes time, and I wish it, I wish we had our student. And no one wishes that anymore than the people who have been so committed to Journey East. But it is happening this spring, so.
Thank you.
So what were the reasons why this visa was denied three times?
We don't get that.
You don't get any, no feedback?
State Department doesn't have to reveal that.
No, the State.
The poor girl.
Yeah.
You know, she must feel so disappointed.
It happened last year, too. We had three students apply and only two were approved.
Okay, well, thanks.
So, yeah, I do have something for next week. There are three policy, next week, sorry, month. There are three policies that are at the five-year, you know, revisit, reconsider. It's good news for you. We're really on top of things. One of them is the Health Insurance Portability Act, Compliance Act, so-called HIPAA. I have a note on here, no change. I recommend that you just review and continue it. This is the model policy that's still recommended by the School Boards Association, so no sense changing anything. You can take that with you though and read it, just so you know what it says, and it could appear on the consent agenda.
Are we warning it? Is that what you're saying?
You don't have to warn it.
We don't have to, we're just having a conversation.
You could just come back next week and say, okay, we reviewed this and it's going to continue. The next, the next one I have is a little more complicated because there is a change.
Before you go forward, can I just say that if anybody has an issue with putting it on the consent agenda, please make sure that either Stephen or I or both of us know that. Otherwise, it'll probably appear, since you're recommending it to be continued, it'll probably just appear on the consent agenda.
And then you could, actually, at the meeting, if you had second thoughts, you could remove it from the consent agenda and we could discuss it. So the next part I have here has to do with the harassment, prevention of harassment of students. This is a big issue. And this is a mandatory policy, as well as the previous one. But this one is quite lengthy. And the reason I printed it out is because you may have trouble following on the screen. I'll call your attention to page two when you get it there.
I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, I made some extras, I think, for the public. If you go to page two, under harassment, at the top of the page, there's something in gray, it's pretty light, but that is the new language. And you can see the importance of that language, which refers to behavior including any incident conducted by electronic means. Obviously, that's a contemporary, you know, updating, updated revision of your previous language.
Mine's not showing up, but I see.
See where there's a second line underneath harassment there?
It starts right under, probably, it starts at including.
Yeah, it starts at including and goes to electronic means.
Yeah. This was in yellow, I'm sure. So that is, then the only other significant, or the only other changes are back on page seven. And those are pretty straightforward, nothing too controversial. I'll point out in the second paragraph on page seven, you go down to the last of that paragraph, this used to refer to the commissioner, and this obviously has to be updated to be the Vermont Secretary of Education. And then later on, under C, at the, towards the bottom of that page seven, data gathering, you can see that I had to change the Vermont Agency of Education and also, once again, the secretary. That is it, I think. There was something about thirty days in one of these things. No, that's a substitute, okay. And the other policy that remains is D, I have it here, but we're not going to pass it out today, D six, but the minutes could show that we referred this to, Duren and I will review this carefully. This is about the substitute teacher policy. And I know that we have some reason to look at that, and certainly we have reason to change it from what it used to be. The old policy doesn't even comply with the new state Board of Education rules, so we do need to look into changing that one, and you'll have to get a draft from me at our next, next month's meeting.
Okay. So this one will also be on the...
This one doesn't need to be on the consent agenda, although if you feel that you understand it pretty well, we can certainly put on the consent agenda to be warned. We would not be able to put on the consent agenda to be reviewed or approved because that language is a significant change, at least page two language is significant. Questions? Thank you. I don't have anything more, except if you want to take this thing up. Okay. All right, so.
I read this to them.
Oh, I only already read the letter that we received from the select board. I just want to advise the board as to what I've done in response to this letter. I'm sure she's explained that this has to do with the right-of-way, that the two-fifty permit, when we were improving the building at Dutton and so forth, in fact, it wasn't, it wasn't any change, but we, there always was a right-of-way by the previous property, by, ever since Leeland and Gray started, a theoretical, if not real, right-of-way that went back of the town hall. And so this was included in the two-fifty permit, and there's a little map here I could pass around to show you that. I also got all this information from Brad Sanderson.
But for clarification, it was included in the two-fifty permit because we were planning on making a parking area out behind the town hall, right?
Well, there's a conceptual, yeah, you see on this map, a conceptual town hall parking area.
But it was part of the bond proposal at the time?
Yeah, yeah.
That's how it entered into the two-fifty.
Yeah. And anyway, I have the material here that traces the minutes from the Act two-fifty permit process and so forth, and Brad Sanderson, who is working for Bob Stevens' associate, that's the people who guided us through the permit and planning process for the improvement of the building, assures me that the, you know, a careful reading of the process would indicate that the select board already agreed to the arrangement we basically have right now, and there isn't any need to be expanding, plowing, paving, whatever. Also, I will proter you for the possibility that if the select board insists, and we will probably have to enter into reconsideration of the issue, either through the two-fifty permit process or otherwise, so that we preserve the integrity of the campus. We can't afford, in my opinion, to have an open driveway with the public driving in and out throughout the day while we're trying to teach on that little driveway, and then down to the caf, you know, present cafeteria space, and then going back to a, to a parking lot. And you should recognize from the select board's point of view, they're stuck between a rock and a hard place with regarding parking for the town hall. They have done something to have a few more spaces, at least protected spaces, there in front of the building.
Yeah, they bumped back.
But they bumped back the sidewalk and so forth. But they, they have a septic system on one side, and the well is on the other side. It's actually on our property is the well. The well is on our property, on the school's property. So, you know, there's a reason for us to try to reach some agreement on this, but I have not been able to get a response from Mr. Martin. I've left a phone message twice, and I think that Emily and I will have to consult about how to proceed in writing to call their attention to our willingness to discuss the issues and reach some resolution informally if we can. So that's the...
So does that, is that...
Questions?
Yeah. Questions first, and if not, are you all comfortable with Stephen and I, since he's been able to reach them clearly by phone, do something in writing?
Yeah, I think that's very important, what you raised, the integrity of the campus, and that's a key, not to have traffic going through here, getting...
Yeah.
Well, you know, the purpose of it was really originally for certainly safety for the building and fire access and so forth. I think that the select board certainly may well have a vision about a permanent parking area in back of the, of the town hall for their employees or otherwise, but, you know, we certainly, according to our advice from the engineer, an engineering firm, don't have that obligation.
When we first proposed that, Frank, you'll have to help me out with this, because there's been so many proposals over the years, and I know you remember them more closely than I do typically. But when we first proposed that parking area out behind, that was really, we did say to the select board at the time that we would be able to possibly designate a parking space for like a person or two.
That's right.
But it would be someone who would come in in the morning and would leave after, wouldn't interfere with the school hours. They would just have their car parked there. So we would have a couple of design, it wasn't for public, it was for people who were working in the building. And it also gave them access to the back of the building so that they would be able to put in new furnace, they had talked about that at the time, and would have off-school campus hours, you know, off-school hours access to places where they'd never had access easily before. So that was the sort of, am I right?
Yeah.
That was where we had agreed with that. But then that didn't fly. That was a proposal that didn't...
Was one of the earlier bond proposals.
It was the proposal with the front lawn addition, I think. And so then, instead of, because that one failed, we kind of canned that thing, and the next proposal was to add on to the back of the Dutton Gym and increase our parking down below. So we eliminated that whole thing and didn't have to go through the Act two-fifty permit for that, am I right?
That's right.
So that's where we are today, and they're sort of bringing this back up, so that, I'm sure they have reasons to need space for that, and Stephen's right.
Yeah, I don't...
They want to make sure we're on good terms.
Right. And I don't want to go into details, but there are minutes from the select board meeting that are included in this documentation, and certainly just so the public's aware that there is reason for some concern, and that is that number eight under the two-fifty permit says, "The permittee shall, that's us, shall construct a new right-of-way, a minimum fifteen feet wide, behind the Dutton Gymnasium addition. The new right-of-way shall be maintained, usable for trucks and cars, and be accessible at all times." The problem is that subsequent to that permit, the select board had a motion which accepted the conceptual quote SKC three document, and this wording could be viewed differently compared to this map on S K C three. Anyway, you know, it's a matter of permitting and compliance language, and it may be a prolonged concern and discussion before it's resolved, but we'll be patient and try to do the best we can, and if anything needs board vote or consideration, we'll bring it back.
Well, one thing I'm certain, I am sure, that this select board doesn't want to compromise the safety of our students, so we'll have to have that conversation.
Right, yeah. And in fact...
And that's what we have to worry about.
The town of Townsend certainly has a number of issues of capital concern in terms of what they, what they need to take care of and municipal services and business, so. Anyway, that's the latest.
Okay, so then we'll send a letter to follow that.
Okay.
That sounds like the board agrees with that?
Yep. And I'll follow up on that, because I do think this letter's a brush too, and that should come back probably for me.
Okay. Anything else?
Maybe that's why they're not responding to my phone call, because I'm not you. I'm just kidding. They personally, the first one, they personally delivered something to me. Oh.
I just got the last one.
One other thing, I have the hard copy of the minutes that are referred to in your consent agenda here. I know that Joe got them out earlier today, but I brought hard copy in case you needed it. Anybody want to read a hard copy? You're all set? Okay.
Okay. Any questions for Stephen? If not, we'll move on to Frank.
Okay. I just have a brief report, so.
Make up for me.
Sure. Okay. Just another update, our audit is progressing well. The Sullivan Power Field work is happening this week, and it appears to be on schedule. And of course, we schedule it now so that we can have an audit report for you and for the annual report that gets published in January. So it takes, it generally takes another month or two for them, once they finish their field work, to generate the documents. And we have nine other audits happening for the other school districts as well, and we are all on track. The other thing I wanted to mention is an enrollment, check-in. Enrollment's always, obviously, central to all of our planning and has a major impact on our budget and our staffing and everything else, of course. And unlike last year, we're a little ahead of where we thought we would be. If you look at the annual report, in total, we projected about three-hundred-and-sixty-six kids. We knew that was expected to be up from about three-hundred-and-forty, what was it, three-hundred-and-forty, I think, seven is what we had last year projected. So we're very close to projections, but when I look at students by town, it looks like we're a little ahead of our forecast on the tuition students, which is very good news.
That is good news, Frank.
Yeah. It's awfully early in the year to make any plans associated with that.
Sure know that.
Yeah. But at this point, I think data I got from Mary Martin, who does our attendance and registrations and so on, is three-hundred-and-sixty-seven kids. We projected about three-hundred-and-sixty-five, so it's almost exactly on. And we projected sixty-five tuition students, and at this point, it looks like we have seventy, so. That is, that is a great place to start the new year. And then I also came prepared to talk about the co-curricular contract. I see that's a little later in our agenda, and also the budget timeline, so I'll defer the rest of my report till then. Any questions I can answer? Thank you.
Just for our enrollment, have we any idea of what the impact E Y might have on, I mean, I know I have a number of neighbors that are in Queens, and may or may not have to be sending kids here next year.
Yeah, well, we did get one student from Vernon last year, but that was the first time we have students from Vernon. And generally, the students that we receive that are not in our... And generally, the students that we receive that are not in our normal...
He said about, there are people maybe having to move because of remind...
Oh, oh, in terms of employees and families.
As far as I've heard, a number of those.
Yes, yes, I know, there are, there are some. There's no statistics that I've been able to review, but I am concerned about that, and I know, I know...
And it's not just Newton, obviously.
Right, and I don't know how many of them are...
About three thousand, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and that definitely is a concern.
We'll have to keep following on that. I mean, I'm not sure it will affect us as much this year, because it's not closing down immediately, right?
And then they have a closure clause. I mean, this thing's not going to shut down like overnight.
No, exactly. But I mean, it is, yeah, but it will start impacting us.
Fourth quarter next year, most parents will never have jobs. They won't have jobs.
Yeah.
I mean, ninety to ninety percent, which would have to be out of state because they never...
Yeah, they're in the nuclear...
Why would they transition into helping it shut down?
Some do, some don't.
I think they're keeping thirty, three hundred to shut it down, so that leaves two hundred and seventy down the road.
And if your job is in nuclear...
Yeah, I mean, they're, two of my neighbors are looking for jobs.
They're specific jobs.
So, and they have middle school, elementary school age kids, so it might, it might skew our numbers if there's more than just you guys, but I don't know what the county is in our school district.
Hey, when we're small, as small as we all are, even one family can make a difference. So, it's something that we'll just, nothing we can really do about it, but just something that we'll keep on radar screen. Okay, thanks for bringing that up.
Sorry.
After you talked about it all going up.
Realistically, we have to plan for that.
Yeah, it's important, it is. Okay, so, thanks, Frank. Red Study Committee, I think you've all heard, oh, I'm sorry. What?
Career Center.
Oh, that's right. I added it up here, and I didn't write it. Lyndle, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'll be very quick.
I need someone to help me. Lyndle's going to do her report here. I did say it was going to be after administrative reports.
And very quickly, it was a meeting on September seventeenth. Stephen and Emily were called away, so to Montpelier, so Stephen didn't go, but Melanie went with me. And there were two presentations, one by Sam Rowley in Horticulture, where he made the point they're educating students as to what's available in agriculture and Horticulture in Vermont, hydroponics, greenhouse management, landscape contracting, and working with Scott Farm and Lillet Ridge Farm, two CSA farms. And they're getting credit for this at Vermont Tech, which was good, college credit. And then Amy Antony presented a STEM program, introductory tech, principles of engineering. This was really interesting. She's working with the National Guard on how to build levees, following Irene, the students are very involved in that. And they're participating in a national skills program, and they came in second, which was really good, the students. Both instructors were very passionate about their subjects, made you want to take the classes there. They discussed the new attendance policy, which I have, if anybody wants to see it. It was driven, interestingly enough, by the needs of employers on their advisory board, that students learn how to follow this attendance policy to prepare them for the workforce, the work world. It's interesting, what you can be excused for, what you're out, when you're penalized. It was an interesting concept. I know we have one here, I don't know how it dovetails. It was really to place readiness skills training on the students as to how they would do in the workforce. And then there was a new thing being developed, which was exciting, a character add initiative, and it's really to create a positive learning environment where students want to be essential to the Career Center. There's a new committee of office staff, teachers, and community to identify new ideas that will help improve the culture of the Career Center. And I asked if they would consider having students on that, and they were very open to that, and I noticed that Dorin had it on her evaluation board to include students, which was very gratifying. So, they were open to that, and I would like to continue to ask about that in future meetings. So, it was, it was a very positive constructive meeting. I enjoyed being there, and I think I learned a lot.
Great. Can you pass that, Tardy?
The attendance?
That is, to me, I just want to read it. I think it's what I read, but I, thank you.
She's got some notes on it, so that's it.
So, when's your next meeting?
November seventeen, November something, second week of November.
And so, you're willing to continue on?
Yeah, I am.
Great.
I'm in this for the run.
That's great. It's nice to have somebody engaged like that. Nice to get the feedback from the kids, isn't it?
Yes, and some issues came up, I discussed with Emily, and I'll talk to Stephen about it, the kids, so.
Good.
Interesting. Oh, and the big perk is you get lunch from the culinary excuse.
Oh, yeah.
I'm willing to keep going to this committee.
Did you get one of those fabulous cookies?
Yes.
They make fabulous cookies.
Oh, that, I forgot to mention that, that's a perk.
Very good.
So, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Lyndle? If not, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, now, hop into the Red Study Committee, you all know, I think, where we are on that. I don't think we've given too much report. We still, our next meeting is November sixth, and we'll be discussing about, yeah, the June third is the tentative date right now for follow-up votes, we don't want to do it in the winter time. And our next meeting is November sixth, where we're going to be discussing, you know, the fine points of a few articles before we go to the State Board. So, I'm expecting it probably won't be in November, we'll be going to the State Board, but it probably in December, if they can fit us onto their agenda. Go ahead, Penny.
Well, the petitions of the people who were running for the board still be valid in June?
Well, I haven't actually pinned down the Secretary of State on that. There would be no question if the vote were closer, but considering the distance between the two Warren votes, it may be, I think, at the minimum, it'll require a re-signing of the confirmation of candidacy. I don't know, you remember that was that little form?
Yeah, there's a little form.
Bruce, you had to sign one of these forms. And that's actually a glaze, because they want to make sure that you, as the candidate, really did file a petition, and that you really have your name properly spelled or represented on the ballot.
On the ballot, that's right.
You know, some people want to say, you know, Douglas, Chip, you know, Jones, or something like that, you know, so that it really appears as the person wants it. And so, I don't, but I don't expect, I mean, I think the boards will all be alert to making sure, given another opportunity for Newfane and Brookline to have, well, Brookline had a candidate, but Newfane could have had more candidates on the ballot. Otherwise, I think all the other towns did have people who stepped forward. And so, I think, we'll presume that they'll be the same level of interest, if not more. And I think the committee will be putting out, I recommend the committee put out a mailing prior to even going to the State Board for approval, because we can still qualify for reimbursement from the state under our information process to the public, not a persuasion process, but information. So, that would be appropriate prior to the State Board's approval. And then, subsequent to that, we can probably expect some expense regarding mailing or other forms of informing the public. That will be the burden of the member boards, member districts. Won't be a lot of expense, but we should not kid anybody about the expense of an election. The boards already are going to undertake the expense, the school district, they undertake the expense of having the poll open on that day.
Okay. So, if there's any questions or comments anybody has, please don't hesitate to get ahold of anybody, either on the committee from your town or one of us on this board who are on it, which there are several of us. Okay. Approved negotiating agreement for co-curricular, do you have a conversation about it?
Only if you think you may change, yeah, because at this point, probably assumptions are tentative.
I mean, it's tentative agreement by the negotiating committee.
Yeah. If the board wants to accept the recommendation of the negotiators, that's fine. If you want to go in executive session, you could do that, we could arrange the agenda so it happens at the end. If you like, what's the board's pleasure?
Well, they don't know what...
What's it about? Well, the public should know what it's about. Frank, what would we be negotiating about?
This is the renewal of the co-curricular contract for the Leland Gray fifty-one positions.
So, that is people involved with sports or advisors and so forth, they get a stipend, and this is negotiation.
We don't usually go into that great detail, do we? I don't recall us doing that before. Is that an annual thing?
No, I think the last contract was two years, was it? I think, and this one is three.
Three years.
This one's a three-year.
Now, this has been negotiated by the administrative staff and the faculty.
By the board as well, by appoint, we, Joe and I were appointed by the board at our last meeting.
That's right.
To represent all of you.
Yes.
And we have done that job, and we have met with the association, and Frank helped us out with our role to get our members and everything in here as they need to be, and we have a tentative agreement that we shook hands on, and hopefully we'll get your approval.
Do you need a motion to approve it?
Yeah, the question's, I mean, we've really never discussed...
I think it'd be wise to go in executive session to share with the board what the numbers are, so that you know, if someone asks you what you approved, you can assure them that you were.
I mean, once the board approves, fine.
But we can't discuss numbers publicly without executive session.
Correct.
Until it's approved. After it's approved, of course, it's a public document.
So, if there's going to be, if anybody wants to know what the negotiating agreement is, we'll put this in the executive session at the end of the meeting, so we don't do it right now. So, is that, because we have an executive session to go into for under personnel as well, for a brief one at the end, and we'll just add this to the second executive session. Okay?
For negotiations.
For negotiations, yeah.
And the other side of that, Lyndle, is the really representative of the association, of the teachers' association.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Discuss status and potential of the, oh, my boundary.
Oh, yes.
You put this on here.
Shall I explain that?
Well, no, I'll quickly explain. Stephen and I did meet as requested by the Wyndham Southwest Supervisor Union with the school board chairs, the supervisor union chairs, and the superintendents from basically the bulk of southern Vermont, including Bennington, which is the Southwest Supervisor Union, and then the four Wyndham County Supervisor Unions. And we had a really great discussion.
It was.
We, I think, had a lot, we were often surprised to how similar, our challenges and our strengths are very similar, doesn't matter which one we come from. And we pretty much walked away with really no decision whatsoever.
Right.
There is, as you know, there is a contract that we signed along with the Wyndham Southwest Supervisor Union, because they were required to, by the Commissioner of Education at the time, now Secretary of Education, to form a study, to perform a study, to conduct a study, and if they weren't going to do it themselves, they were going to have it done for them, because their superintendent had left, and until they, they were only allowed to hire an interim until they finished this, completed this study. So, we signed on with them so that they would be able to get funding for that study, and we're, you know, interested in having conversations that was prompted by them, not by us, but we're more than willing to have continuing conversation with them and whatever their needs are. But I have to admit that the needs have changed a little bit as far as the study itself goes, because it's been pretty clear from the State Board of Education that there will be no more of those required studies, and there was a recommendation by the board member from the Southwest Supervisor Union, who's actually a member of the state standards, I mean, State Board of Education, who said that she thought that you could, they could probably not do that study. They weren't going to be forced into doing it by the State Board.
She recommended that Safroy, the counterpart from Emily from that SU, just write a letter back saying, well, you know...
They have an interim.
We have an interim, and we'd like to continue, and we don't see a further study as that profitable, if that's really what they, that advisable, if that's what they decide. But really, the ball is in that supervisor union board's...
So, I think the Wyndham Southwest Supervisor Union, right, will make this, have a conversation amongst themselves and make a decision about where to go with that, and we'll wait to hear from them. There's really nothing more for us to do at this time. Okay, any questions? If not, all right, we'll move on to budget development timeline and board priorities.
If you have a timeline that can handle it...
Good, good, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay. Dorin and I met quite some time ago and published the timeline for the faculty, included in the faculty handbook. And then, this document is one that you've seen in the past with an update. This is the first budget, you may remember seeing all of the other district budgets on the S U Y timeline, but we're the first. Here's just Leland Gray. And Dorin and I met with the faculty on September thirtieth to give them an orientation on the tools that we have available for data collection and working with them, it went very well last year using the Google Form interface, where they log into a system that the Leland Gray IT department has developed, and then Dorin and I access that and send it back to them to show progress. And then, of course, we review with Stephen and then develop a draft for the board. So, you see the dates there, the key dates are a draft for the board, first meeting in November. I have that tentative date, if you wanted to consider that, on the nineteenth. We've done that in the past, but sometimes you don't actually hold that meeting, it sort of depends on what you feel you need for time to deliberate.
Yeah, I mean, there are times when we've, we've been doing it recent, last few years, because we wanted to allow the public a second opportunity to have input.
Don't we allow the public to come and talk to us before we actually vote on the...
Well, yeah, I mean, they're certainly able to come on the twelfth, as always has happened, and give us feedback at that point. I am kind of wondering about, I don't, about the eleventh, about the nineteenth, I just thought we did it earlier in December, the week before our, I know there's Thanksgiving in there.
Yeah, the Thanksgiving holiday is, it may...
We usually just hold the second monthly meeting in November, that's what we have done, but it's been earlier than Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm. So, would be the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, it's because our meeting is so late.
Mm-hmm. Right. But it's up to you, of course, this is a draft.
So, at the nineteenth, you're thinking that would be the time that the public, because the budget would have been out on the twelfth, so by the nineteenth, they could come to that meeting and spew or whatever. Or vent or thank us?
Yep.
Thank you guys. And then, we vote on it on the tenth?
How does everybody feel about that timeline?
It's probably better before Thanksgiving than after, you know?
I just think the twenty-sixth is awfully close to Thanksgiving. I mean, I know schools still open on the twenty-sixth, but barely. I think they're not on the twenty-sixth.
People are gone.
So, I need to do it on the night before we leave, so, okay. Does that present any problems from the administrative perspective?
Sure.
The nineteenth?
I got two other board meetings on that night.
Well, it's all, it's Frank and me.
Yeah, no, one of them wants Frank that night, probably change, this takes probably a while. I just came from Dover, so, you know, Dover's in the same mood, mode, but I have to say that Leland Gray's budget considerations take precedence over the other elementary schools, because they're on a different timeline. They have a hard time recognizing that. They want to go ahead and get into this just as fast and furious as possible, but we just can't accommodate all...
I'm curious about the third. On the fourth is when we do our Wyndham Central, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, first Wednesday.
So, people should be around around him?
Well, I'm thinking of Stephen more than I think...
Well, it's Jamaica, Jamaica's school board has a regular meeting on that night already. That's their usual meeting time, Tuesday, the nineteenth.
So, what about the third?
The third, it's okay to me, I'll check.
How about you, Frank, and you, Brian?
I'm just concerned that it'll only be one week till you vote on it.
But I'm not sure.
The third is not so good for me, just because of the Wyndham Central budget and the amount of work that it takes to develop that, but...
So, you're right, that's a good point, and that's not just you, I think.
Yeah, there's no free lunch, I got words broken on that Tuesdays.
All right, so, we're going to stick with the nineteenth, is that right?
Might as well.
All right.
If Frank likes it, I like it.
So, does that work? Well, that's nice of you. And we feel the same way, Frank.
Well.
If you like it, we like it.
Okay.
Right? Anybody complaining about the 19th?
Yeah.
All right. Can I all be here?
Sure.
We'll put it down as tentative. If this budget is coming in at a 5% decrease, my guess is we'll still have to hold meetings. See what happens.
So between the 12th and the 19th, will there be time to say, like, have a press release so that the public gets aware of this budget? I mean, how else would the public even know?
I'll see it on TV.
Or online, because we all really watch it.
It doesn't come out quite that quick.
I'm just trying to understand how they get informed.
And what do you think is the mean? I mean, we have the reformer as a possibility.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
If we're reporting on things, we can certainly invite a reporter to be here.
Will there be something in the paper between the 12th and the 19th so he actually gets the public?
We actually do also post, we typically post the draft agenda once it's presented to the board.
A draft budget.
I mean, budget.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll do all those means. I appreciate.
So there will be a press release.
Yeah, I appreciate the concern. We need to, if you, I'm asking if there are any things we haven't done that we should do, we should do them.
No problem. Good. That's the whole point, have the 19th, right?
And if we make the decision tonight to do it on the 12th and the 19th, that's gonna go not only, you know, in our minutes and on our television program that we happen, lucky enough to participate in, but also you can do it in, you know, the newsletter or wherever.
Put it in Monday notes.
Put it in Monday notes or whatever and remind everybody. And it can go on even on your.
But it affects the board, just the school community.
Of course.
Yeah.
Does every town have what Brookline have? I'm so new still. You know, the website that goes out to every town resident?
Yeah, they don't all do that.
Okay, 'cause that's a good one. That'll get stuff out on them.
Yeah, I think Brookline has the most dependable one.
Townsend has one too.
Yes.
They do.
I think so.
Joe's not on it.
Not on it.
Well, anyway, any other comments about the timeline?
Yeah.
We're gonna leave it on here. The board will be presented with a draft budget on our regular meeting on the 12th. And then we will also have a second meeting regarding our draft budget on the 19th to discuss and review and hear feedback from the public if there is any. That works?
For me.
Okay.
So the 19th is the best time for the public to come if they've got critical comments. I mean, they should be coming to all of them.
That's the ideal time to be formative, yeah.
I mean, what will happen on the 12th, I'm assuming unless anybody wants it any different, is that we will spend time dissecting the budget as a board. So there'll probably be less time for community to give feedback at that point in time because the board's still trying to grasp all the details of the budget that night. So we'll spend our time, you know, dissecting it. I would encourage for, you know, community members who are interested to be there and participate in that with us. But as far as back and forth and answering questions, we're gonna be asking a lot of questions ourself probably at that time. So that's why what Stephen said is correct. The 19th would be better because we'll have already been informed ourselves and be able to respond more accurately. Okay? All right, and the only other part of this was board priorities. Anybody wanna share with the administration your thoughts? Go ahead, have your hands up first.
I like the way we've done it before is, you know, just saying to take into consideration what's best for the kids and being fiscally responsible and doing the best you can. I think that's sort of how.
It is what we've done in the past. We've mentioned, you know, meeting the needs of the students.
Giving a number or anything like that, or an up or a down request, just.
Anybody else wanna comment?
No.
That about does it.
Fiscally responsible to meet the needs of the kids, obviously.
Well, I'd just like to pose the question differently.
Absolutely.
If everybody's commented in an open-ended way. So consider the directions that Durin is taking and the rest of my administration at W C S U. What are the initiatives, you know, based on a strategic plan? What are the activities, actions that you think should be, how shall I say, held as priority or others that, you know, think could take lesser role, lesser emphasis? I mean, you know, I understand it's putting you in a hard spot of making some kind of decision about that, but I think you can safely assume there isn't enough money to go around and do everything.
So are you anticipating something? I mean, what do you?
No, no, I wanna leave it open-ended. I'm just saying that sometimes it's easier for you to respond to what you know has been going on. And if there's something that isn't, you know, there has been discussion about driver's ed, there's been discussion about music and, anyway, I don't wanna prejudice what your thoughts may be, but there've been lots of things that have been discussed.
We've had lots of foreign language.
And so if there are any of those that are representing the public and your own feelings about what's appropriate, it's better for us to hear them now administratively at the front end of our deliberations than have you be in the position of finding yourself, gee, do I react at this point? What do I say? You know.
So does anyone have any feedback on that one?
We'd like our proposals to match the board and the public's interests is what we're saying.
The board's, is the public's.
Yeah.
I don't even know how to start. Maybe I won't.
Well, make it brief.
We talked about giving one credit of physical education. No, we didn't talk about it. We made it policy that the students could have, could earn one credit.
Half a credit.
Half a credit.
Half a credit.
And I'm wondering if that has an impact on the budget for the physical education department?
Currently, no. The half-credit difference has not had an impact on the budget. There has still been a need for two full-time P E teachers. Plus, we have another .33 position, which is half P E, half health credit, which is a very different, highly personalized, individualized, but yet it's a group. So there's socialization too of another kind of way for students to earn P E that's different from traditional P E. So no, and that opportunity is new. That replaced, actually, the amount of health education that all the students got.
And is there any consideration for meeting the minimal requirement for physical education by the state as opposed to what we do?
Any consideration by the administration?
That there's an area to look at, I guess, in my mind.
He's talking about graduation requirements.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that would be, that would come from the board. I mean, I don't anticipate that. I mean, the challenge it was for, and some of you were part of those meetings about allowing for students to earn half a credit through athletic participation, the co-curricular program. Have we spent half a year on that?
Yeah, we sure did.
For the half-credit when I had proposed a full-credit. So the idea of reducing the amount of credit students need for graduation, and I'm not in a position to propose that, but if that was something that came from the board, I was to you, so.
I just don't even know if it's a possibility to make those changes.
With a sufficient timeline, it's possible to adjust the graduation requirements. You're not going to have, you know, that isn't a way to deal with an immediate budget concern. You know, we need to, it needs to be part of a overall strategic plan by the board, or not strategic, but, you know, a plan over timeline of the board, that you're heading in a direction regarding the graduation requirements with an eye towards, you know, investing differently than limited resources you have is a positive way of putting it.
And so that's the kind of conversation we should be having, you know, in one of our summer retreats about where, what direction we're going. I think what Stephen's looking for is something a little more general, less specific around what kind of budget would you like to see. I mean, it doesn't have to be about dollars. I'll step right in first and say that I have been really pleased with the direction Durin has taken to school and focusing on improving our students' opportunities. You know, it's been great to see more kids signing up for foreign language and having opportunities for A P courses where they're needed. The direction you've been taking for all of the classwork that our kids take, I would love to see that not only continue but expand for our kids. There's so many demands out there on them. And there's so many things coming down, the dual enrollment, all this stuff. We really need to be focusing on academics. And I'm not saying only on academics, because honestly, for me, music and theater and all those are academics as well. They all complement each other. So I like the direction we're going. I'm very excited about it. And that's what I want to see us continue personally, for me. I don't have any specific areas where I think we're overloaded or under, not needing the needs, although, wouldn't it be great if we had more money, you know? But since we don't, you know, I could think of all kinds of ways to spend money. But I think we've been spending money wisely over the last few years.
And getting results.
I really do. And we're getting results from it, exactly. And that's why I'm very supportive of the direction you're taking us in. I'd like to see us continue. But that's me personally. I'm not speaking for the board.
I agree. I know Stephen was talking about the increase in special ed in the very early pre-K and early education. Is that something that's gonna come into play? Are we increasing in that package? Is that gonna be an increased budget item? Well, if they're in pre-K now. I guess we have no control over that. That happens.
We don't. And, you know, we've faced that typically most years. Every year, some are up, some are down, but.
Of course, the rationale for investing in the students early in their careers of life is that we do have some marvelous examples of students who have left special education based on their performance and abilities and skills gained. So it certainly, or at least reduced the expenses as they proceeded through their school careers. But I, you know, I did share with you about the numbers because in the aggregate across the S U, after all, you are representing five towns and they all have elementary school budgets. So kind of new thing being together. But, so the pressures, that's where the early ed, you know, pressure is going to be.
I didn't know if an increase was also reflected at middle school, high school level. Not being new, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, we, no, generally, we don't, we don't have too many radical surprises because we know the clientele, you know, we know where they're coming from and they've been previously identified. But it does happen in the middle school. In high school, we identified a number of students because of the challenges of adolescence that.
Families moving out too.
Yeah.
And that always impacts us.
That seems to be the biggest factor, families moving out.
I'm currently an educational surrogate in the Brattleboro Middle School. And because they've taken that inclusion grant, they're seeing an increase in moving in.
Well, people will want.
That's not our playing around at the moment.
Sometimes it's just a matter of housing being available.
Yeah, true, true.
Some towns find that if they have low-income housing, it correlates, unfortunately.
Last year, 17% of our students were eligible for special education and the state average was 15%. So.
Okay. All right, so it is.
I don't know this year's percentage. I couldn't access that right now.
No.
Just tell you what it was in June.
You got what, Leland and Gray?
Yes.
And then related to that.
Thank you, that's helpful.
So 17% of our budget, so it's similar. 17% of our budget is spent on special education. Last year was 18%. The year before that was about 16%.
So we typically are slightly over probably the average then.
Thank you.
So the, are there the comments on that? Of course, I got another one for it. It's even harder.
Well, I was gonna just say something about the P E piece, if that's okay?
Yes.
So the, there's a commission, help me, Emily, the Education Quality Standards Commission, a group of, say, 20 individuals who have proposed new school quality standards, except they call it education quality standards. And there is a provision in there that maintains the minimum of one and a half years of P E participation in high school. Plus, it also, oh, I was gonna say, it also maintains the P E twice a week for middle school. Okay, here's the plus part. 30 minutes of physical activity for every student K-12 daily options. That's what they call it. They call it options. Physical activity options daily. And it cannot replace the P E requirement. So what that means, I hope to find out when I go to one of their hearings that's happening. Tonight is one in Brattleboro. There's another one in Northern Vermont that I'll be going to in about a week and a half. And so what the implications that may be on the budget. I mean, right now, it's a proposal, so I'm not sure what the, Emily, have you heard of a, heard about a timeframe for that may be accepted by, it's approved, I suppose, by the State Board of Education?
It is, right. And I think that they're going through this public engagement process first and I don't, that's gonna take another month or so, a month or, I don't know, you know when the last meetings are because you're gonna try to attend.
Yeah, the 21st, I think, is the last one.
Then they'll probably go back and review feedback.
Be interesting to see how our GIST program, you know, you can use some of those hours because that's quite a part of.
Is that the skiing?
Yeah, skiing and other activities.
So this is, this discussion is about adding 30 minutes a day, Monday through Friday, during the course of the school day devoted to P E?
Well, they don't call it P E. And it doesn't say it has to be led by physical education teachers.
But these are 30 minutes that have to come out because we're not extending the school day. So classes have to be reduced, so.
It doesn't even say it has to be during the school day. It says daily options. Does that include co-curricular options, which we already fulfill? That, it says.
So the varsity soccer team has to do half an hour options before going out on the field?
No, the hour and a half that they do includes their half-hour options.
Yes. The only thing that it doesn't include is P E class. So, but it is another part of the education quality standards that state that there need to be co-curricular activities offered at the middle and high school level. So that's in a different section of the document. So are they one in the same or?
Every.
I have some questions about it. So about the direction of P E or fitness, I was, you know, raised eyebrows to see, like, okay, what does this mean for us?
That's Michelle Obama.
Reduce the graduation requirement, right? So to offset the increase in options that are gonna be required every day if this goes through, you know, to sort of make an adjustment, right? If you're, if our kids are spending 30 days, 30 minutes of every day doing something physical.
At which can't supplant P E class.
Right. But you can make an adjustment in the graduation requirement for P E. Just, right?
Right, but it can't be under one and a half credits.
Okay.
It spells out one and a half years, meaning one and a half credits.
Okay. But right now, we're two.
Correct.
So you could make that adjustment.
We could.
I mean.
And we offer options pretty much every day, don't we?
Well, we're talking every student does, right? This is a requirement for everyone, right?
Yeah.
Options for everyone.
Can I just get back to the?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to talk about the action.
This is not actually.
See, what happens is we get to the concrete right away. We're talking about the minutes of the day and so forth. I just wanna pull us back a little bit. The education quality standards has been in process for well over a year or two. It has been contributed by the Vermont Principals Association, the Superintendent Associations, or there have been a lot of groups contributing to a review of this. And this is the opportunity for the public at large to be involved, and certainly all board members and principals and so are invited. Durin asked me if she could miss this meeting tonight, and I suggested that she try this meeting up north because they're the same.
It goes until October 28th, the public hearings and public comment period. But it's not coming until, presented to the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules until December 2014. So this is a long time.
This goes, this goes on for quite a long time. And you're meeting for, yeah, what they anticipate?
January. This must be, this must be.
January 15 or then.
Yeah, I'm not sure. How could this be? They must have this date in here wrong. Because it can't be.
Well, these things take a long time.
Proposed rules accepted by State Board of Education in January 2014.
So they're adjusting your graduation requirement.
December 2014. So they've got it wrong in here. Either it's December 2013 and then accepted by the State Board of Education, January 2014, or January 2015. They've got a date wrong in here. I can't tell.
Anyway, I just caution, get, you know, too excited about implementing these right away. Anyway, I just caution, get, you know, too excited about implementing these right away, okay? But the other thing to keep in mind, if you go actually read the document, I think you will be impressed with how progressive and light and how positive it is regarding the needs of our students. I mean, there's nothing in there that is particularly, what, something that I would particularly, I would, could object to in terms of benefiting our students. But then it rubs against the public's ability to pay or the question about how we support it in our small school settings in a way that's meeting the needs of all students. So that's a continuing challenge we have regardless of what the, what the standards we're speaking about may be.
Go to the State Board of Education website, Education Quality Standards Commission, and there's the list of public hearings, and you can also provide public comment to.
Yes, you don't have to attend the meetings to provide your comments.
Please go ahead, read the document and give me feedback. Okay, any other comment about the budget? Direction?
One thing I always do is review course enrollments to determine decreases, increases in courses that we offer, which of course has staffing implications. And try to see that our courses are well enrolled. Certainly, the best enrolled are course requirements, graduation requirements. So that, so, I mean, I just let you know that that's a process.
Okay, thank you. We'll assess these and put together the best budget we can and figure out what we can do.
Correct. Thank you. So approved bills and pay orders, I just asked Joe to hand it to me, and he said he had a couple of questions. So if we can just skip over that for a second while they're discussing that and go to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes only the minutes of September 10th. All right, that's the rule. And seconded, did you hear, Allison? It was moved by, it was moved by Patty and seconded by Jeremy. Okay, and since there's no comment unless someone wants to pull it out on consent agenda. If not, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
Joe did a good job.
He did, he did a nice job.
Very quick.
Yep. Okay, and so we're going to have two executive sessions just after we've approved the bills and pay orders. One for personnel and then a second one for contract negotiations. And our next meeting's November 12th at 7:00 p.m. here, when we will look at the budget for the first time. And then our executive committee meeting at Wyndham Central is October 30th, 7:00 p.m., and that is here too. And then we have our November 6th Regional Education District Study Committee meeting here.
So regarding that meeting on the 30th, it's likely to be upstairs. It is a public meeting, but usually not too many people come. But all the board members certainly are invited, even if you're not on the executive committee. I'm trying to find a room here because you have things going on.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, I know. It's always a challenge for poor Allison over there.
But there's room on A level. We'll plug your head.
Okay, so we have bills and pay orders. We have warrants dated 9/12, 9/27, 9/13, 9/30, 10/8, and 10/8 totaling $787,855.86. And then two payroll, 9/16 and, I mean, 9/13 and 9/27 totaling $240,614.55. Total warrants and payrolls, $1,028,470.48. And they've been reviewed by two school board members, and questions have been asked and answered, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So you want to make a motion?
Sure, move to approve the bills and pay orders.
Okay, is there a second? Patty, you do them?
Second.
All right. Then moved and seconded. Any feedback?
No, they were fine, they, minor stuff, we almost forgot.
Okay, so if everything's all set, you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. I'll go give these to Allison, and we're going to, all right, we're going. And then we're going to move into executive session. Right?
Let's do personnel first.
We need a motion to go into executive session for personnel. We did that while you were busy. We didn't need you. But we did comment that your minutes were great. Thank you.
Yeah, we commended.
We did. You didn't even hear us. So we need to, what we'll do is we go into executive session for one thing. We'll come back, I will go back, right immediately back in for a second reason because it's appropriate to do it that way.
All right, let him do personnel first.
Yep.
Move to go into executive session for a personnel matter.
Are we still on?
Not, once we're in, we're off. So it's been moved and seconded by Jeremy to go into executive session for personnel reasons. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We are now into executive session. Okay, we are now out of executive session.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we ratify the agreement between Leland and Gray and the WC, WCEA for co-curricular activities for 2014 through 2016.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Jeremy. Okay. If no other discussion, you ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you. That's it, right? Just need a mo, just need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye. And opposed? Okay, go home.